I call this Union County Planning Board meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April the 5th. In front of you, you have your agenda. At this point in time, do we have a full quorum here without having any alternates to be selected? We do. All right. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda that was mailed to us? See no objections. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, light sign. All right. Also included in our packet is our January the 5th meeting. The minutes from that. Trust you've had time to read that and look over it. This has to do with our outdoor storage facilities. Do I hear a motion that we accept them as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That Russell laid the motion down when he made his.
All right, motion passes. Tonight, we have item number five. We have a conditional rezoning petition for the Moore Farm Active Adult Community Two. They're requesting a rezoning classification from R-40 to MPD to MPD containing 116 acres. This is located off of Waxaw Indian Trail Road within Vance Township. At this time, I would ask a member of the staff to come forward.
Go ahead. Russell.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. The staff report should be coming down the line there. I think you guys received the site plan in your agenda packets. Is that correct?
Okay.
You'll probably recognize the site. This is before you several months ago as a rezoning. Basically, these properties right in here. It's Waxaw Indian Trail Road, kind of where my cursor is. And this is the backside of Brandon Oaks neighborhood. Indian Trail is just to the north. This is Weddington over here and Wesley Chapel. So it's kind of surrounded by municipalities, but this is unincorporated area. Properties we're talking about are right in this general area. This is the Moore Farms Active Adult Community. A few months ago, this came before you guys. It was a R-40 zone piece and it was rezoned to a master planned development district. You guys recommended approval for the original site plan. Went before the board of commissioners for a public hearing. It was approved by the board of commissioners. They're coming back tonight because the owners of the property have indicated that they wanted to include the remaining portion of the property inside that development. I think that was part of the initial plan and then it was changed. And so, but now they're wanting to add it back in. So unfortunately, when it came before you guys, that piece wasn't included. You can see on the site plan that you guys received in your agenda packets, you can see the new site plan that they're proposing. It's going to be 116.11 acres. And what we're doing, since part of it's zoned MPD.
We don't have a site plan.
You guys didn't get a site plan in your agenda packets?
Nope.
Okay. I believe I've got one. Forward here, so you guys should have. Just kind of share. And then I'll put them down.
Yeah, I can follow along. I can get it.
I'm set. And there's one on the computer screen, too. If you guys have your monitors up. It's fairly, I mean, it's almost identical to the plan that you guys approved several months ago. The addition is right in here. There's a piece of property that wasn't included. This is the, I guess, the home place where the family lived and some property behind it was not included in the original rezoning. So they've decided to go back and try to, want to include that. So they're picking up some additional lots. I think the overall density of the project went down a little bit, but they're putting those additional lots on that track and keeping the home place and I believe trying to incorporate that and make it an amenity as part of the, as part of the development. Not much has changed from my staff analysis. We've got two zoning districts we're dealing with. Current zoning is, the majority of this has already been rezoned to a master planned development district. This little portion here is still zoned R-40. Since they're including this and they had to redesign a little bit to accommodate that, we just said, well, we'll just treat this whole thing as a new rezoning. So we're going R-40 and the recently rezoned MPD to just another MPD. That'll make it cleaner so we don't have two master planned development districts floating out there. They brought this in on March 4th. We met with the developer, the representative, just a little bit before that, to kind of talk about the process. It is still consistent with the comp plan. This is identified as a mixed residential area. Tends to support a little bit higher densities than the one acre R-40 designation allows. So, and it is an age restricted community. So there will be restrictions on who can move in there. Like I said, it is consistent with the request and based on that, planning staff has recommended to rezone this tract to MPD. Not a lot has changed from my staff analysis. I won't go into a whole lot of detail. It's basically a copy and paste from the previous one. You know, there will be some amenities in the neighborhood to support those residents. They're still going to feature the forces of the Carolina Thread Trail that will connect to other places. They're going to have a mix of different housing styles to support different lifestyles. They are still intending to preserve the pecan grove out front. And they will have an entry feature, the barn type feature off of Waxaw Indian Trail, which are all parts of the original submittal. I'll stop there unless anybody's got any questions.
Lee, I think, Mr. Chair, I think the area needs this type of housing personally. The question I've got is, and it's a loaded question. Waxaw Marvin Road.
Waxaw Indian Trail.
Indian Trail. It's a very busy road.
Yes, sir.
Very congested. Can you bring us up to date on what the plans are to widen or anything like that?
Well, currently, it is labeled, I believe, as a major thoroughfare.
Major thoroughfare, yeah.
And with that labeling, obviously, comes, from the county's perspective, we're supposed to require at least a certain amount of right of way to be dedicated. But beyond that, there's no funding set aside for improvements for that road by NC DOT at this time. We have no idea when that will come. It could be 10 years, it could be 20 years. Unfortunately, DOT tends to move on a as needed basis. That's the best I can do.
Totally understand.
I think the long range transportation plan does identify some improvements for Waxaw Indian Trail Road as far as widening goes, but that's a, that's a plan that's way off in the future. And like Brian said, there's no funding right now available for any projects on Waxaw Indian Trail. As part of their, like Brian said, as part of their plan approval process, if this is approved and they go into submitting constructions, they will be required to dedicate additional right of way, possibly. You know, I'm not, this is a conceptual level plan, so we don't, haven't gotten the details of what's there. I think they have had some conversations with DOT about what types of improvements will be required at Waxaw Indian Trail. Those were kind of agreed to based on the previous plan. There's just a few more lots being added. The rezoning already exists for the majority of this. So they're really coming back to add those few portions up at the top. I don't think that's going to add a lot to, as far as traffic for this development. I'll let John talk a little bit more about the improvements that DOT is going to require them to do and the types of ingress and egress requirements they're going to have on this development.
Thank you.
Hello.
Any more questions? All right.
I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you and good evening. My name is John Ross. I'm with Eagle Engineering. Our company is located at 2013A Van Buren Avenue in Indian Trail. I'm here this evening representing the developer, who is the Moser Group, and also the petitioners, who are the Moore and the Pitt families. All of that the same as it was back in, I believe it was in October when we were here before. I'd like to say first of all, thanks to Lee and to Brian for their efforts through this process. Union County is very lucky to have these good folks on the staff and I appreciate their efforts and their guidance through this. I'm going to flip back to just a couple images that we have, and I think maybe this can better tell the story. This is the, this is the plan that was presented and was approved and was zoned by the county commissioners on December the 7th. And what you will see is where the, I'm showing on the cursor, the old home place is right here. And this is still under the ownership of two heirs of the Moore family. As we began the process, we had the whole 116 acres in the original submittal. I came to Lee at the owner's request to say, sorry, Lee, we need to pull out about six and a half acres. We need to stop, rework this because they wanted to retain the home place that had been in the family, or the property's been in the family for about five generations. So I can expand that to show the more definitively, the area highlighted in yellow here, that is the, actually, 6.471 acres that the property owners had requested, the petitioners requested that we pull out from that original submittal. After some time of retrospect, they've asked that we now incorporate that and rezone that into the overall master planned development. So that's why in the petition, you see there's an R-40 portion, which is what's highlighted in yellow, and the rest is the MPD, which is the balance, the 109 acres again that was rezoned. So in our process of developing the plan that you've seen this evening, just a couple minor changes have been made. Again, the black rectangle right here represents the home place. It's our intent and it's the desire of the property owners, the petitioners, that we maintain that home, keep it as a part of the amenity of the community. So we have a vision that that will be a gathering point, that will be a card, card playing house, a library. And the intent and the desire is to show some of the history of the Moore family. So I don't want to use the word museum. I want it to be a very active amenity area, but the intent is to honor the family, the Moore family that is there. So in our previous, previous plan, we had a fairly large amenity area there. What you'll see is we've actually pushed that a little bit to the west. So this orange or pink or salmon or whatever color you want to call it, this will be the major amenity. This will be yet another gathering point with lawn areas. It'll be an active adult gathering point with trails. And it allows us to incorporate what is just a spectacular looking manmade lake or pond that's on that. So a nice sloping meadow to the waterfront there. So that actually works out very, very well for our overall amenity. A couple other changes to the plan, by incorporating the six and a half acres, we were able to push our entry feature, our entry road, just a little bit to the north. And Mr. Fisher, if I may address the questions that you had about transportation. In our original plan, we actually did a traffic impact analysis. We reached out to DOT, not Eagle Engineering, but our traffic consultant, reached out to DOT, created a scoping document. They studied our proposed intersections and DOT said, go down and look at the roundabout as well. They came back to us and of course, we're dedicating the additional right of way for the major thoroughfare that is Unionville Indian Trail Road. We'll have two outbound lanes on our thoroughfare road and a widened inbound lane on our major connector. They asked that we limit traffic on our southern entrance, which will be the barn entrance, we call it, to a right in, right out motion, and we've agreed to do that. And then they requested for a turn lane and taper, a southbound turn lane and taper on Waxaw Indian Trail Road. So all of that has been discussed, worked out with DOT. We've actually physically staked the drive connections in the field and asked DOT to do a visual review of that before we got too far in the design process. So that, that was addressed. Nothing has been addressed since the original approval, but those were, that's where things were left with DOT. I'll say that nothing has changed as far as our design guidelines go. All the very same commitments that were previously made are still made. Yes, the addition of the six and a half acres roughly adds, I think, about 12 units to the total count. As Lee pointed out, I think our density goes down by a couple hundredths of a point, but it's still 2.3 as opposed to 2.34. We're at 2.32. So roughly 2.3 units per acre is what our net density, our overall density for the project would be. We had a, as part of the normal process, we had a community meeting. If you recall, we had one early in the process before and we had, other than the petitioner and the, and myself and the county, I think we had six people at the very first meeting. We had one person that showed up. Brian, thank you for being there, but we had, had one, one non-petitioner and non-county personnel person at that community meeting. And I shared with him all of the questions that we had from the previous. And the gentleman said he had no further comments and thanks, and then a lot of chat from there, but nothing of concern was expressed at that meeting. I'll be glad to answer any specific questions you may have.
Josh, can you do me a favor? Can you talk about the change in the lot, lot width?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's a good point. Let me go back again to the previous one. That's a good point, Brian. What you see here is we actually have, in this mix, four different lot types. This whole pod was anticipated to be a 42 foot wide lot product. What was shown in the yellow here was a 50 foot wide product. And what was in the orange was a 60 foot wide product. And then these are the attached single family, high end townhome pod is what is back here. I think there are 56 of those. These, these did not change at all in the new configuration. The developer is very close to signing a deal with a builder. Of course, all things are contingent upon rezoning. But the builder, who is very, very strong in the senior home community, has requested that we actually go to all 52 foot wide lots. So all the ones that were 40 are now 52. The ones that were 60 are 52. And the ones that were 50 are now 52. So the unit count, again, the density stayed almost the same. It was basically a net zero. There was certainly no gain in the number of lots, but it's uniform as far as the detached single family homes. The attached single family homes stayed exactly as they were before. So all of our additional lots that we picked up were right in this area. I should have shown this as a white arrow connecting as a possible future extension into connectivity to another property, but we will be extending that right of way to the adjacent property to the north for future connectivity, if that's the desire. Otherwise, the amenities, the community garden stays the same. All the water features throughout stay the same. We are committing to dedicating the right of way for the Carolina Thread Trail along Davis Mine and Price Mill Creeks. Lee, you pointed out that there's some more discussion about the adjacent property under development. We'll be glad to work to their, with their engineering staff to help identify where those easements need to line up as far as the thread trails go. We're not so tied down that we don't have some flexibility at this point. Yes, sir.
Is the ownership north that borders this tract, are they the same?
It is not the same. They are members of the extended family, but it's not the same ownership for this petition.
Any further questions you would?
Yeah, as far as the, looking into the future, that road, Waxaw Indian Trail and Beulah Church, that's the one with the big hump intersection, is, is south of the roundabout.
Yeah.
That was identified as an area that's likely in the future going to have to be, or they're going to make into a roundabout, is my understanding. Is that right?
I can't recall if that was a roundabout or not. You may be correct, and I can't recall for sure about whether that is a roundabout.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, if kind of construction tie-in, if they're going to be doing that roundabout and construction's going on here, whether the two are, you know, kind of going to impact each other? Because I'm assuming that south of the, if they do that roundabout, they're going to have to direct traffic, what is it down, Potter, you know?
If I could, I'm sorry, go ahead. If I could interject, our roadway, our widening will be asymmetric and will be on our side of the property. So it's not like we're going to be ever obstructing the flow of traffic on Unionville Indian Trail?
No, I know that. I'm just wondering, when they did the traffic study that you talked about, they talked about the Potter Road.
Right. They did not go on down below that. No, sir, they did not. When they met with DOT to, and I guess in the county engineering folks, to identify the scoping document, it did not extend beyond that roundabout. Right. It's something, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. And then the other question I had, in the future, if, for instance, they do decide to widen Waxaw Indian Trail, is there, does the state then, or the municipality, or the power that has to condemn the portions down to do the widening, have to pay for the portion in front of this development, or is that already dedicated?
What we'll do as far as, when this goes in the plan review, we have standards in place for, you know, when a, when a road's identified as a major, as a major thoroughfare. We have standards in place for a certain right of way width that will accommodate whatever future width the long range transportation plan calls for. So I don't recall exactly what the transportation plan calls for, but let's assume for a second it's a four lane section, we would require dedication to accommodate a four lane section.
Asymmetrically, of course.
Right. Well, yeah, it could be made up of two different sides, but I think we actually require 50% on each side.
We do.
So we would only require 50% on their side. The other portion would have to come from somewhere else. But as far as the payment for it, that's something that's typically worked out between the owner of the property and DOT. We don't, we don't, the county doesn't really get involved in that part.
Well, I guess my question is, do we dedicate it at this point to the DOT? For instance, that easement is there, the DOT doesn't have to negotiate a deal to purchase that because the easement's in place?
Yeah, that, that part will happen during the plan review process. It will be dedicated to DOT. That's part of our standard, that's part of our standard review process. Even if this were a straightforward R-40 subdivision, they would have to do it.
Okay.
But they're not required to give it for free. It's a...
We don't get involved with that part of it.
We allow them to negotiate that, but our ordinance requires that they actually dedicate that, not donate it. Donate's free. Dedicate it means they have to show it. They have to build all of their lot lines and their property lines off of that right of way. And then DOT and the property owners have to negotiate how that's transferred into DOT's ownership. So your question really had to be, how do we accomplish, how do you get the right of way? Well, what we're trying to do is acquire, allow DOT to acquire that right of way as developments are built. So they don't have to go in and now, now, number one, purchase them, and number two, potentially have to take someone's home because it's too close.
Right.
So we work to make sure that the right of way is dedicated and that there's some already agreement worked out between the ownership.
Okay. So the DOT would make the negotiation at that stage once you go to the final?
That is correct. As part of our driveway permit and our encroachment and our roadway improvement plans, that is correct, yeah.
And that was my question. They don't have to come back at a later time and then negotiate based on what the area looks like 10 years from now?
Right. We incorporate the latest plans that they have for their long range projections. That is correct. Currently, the property line goes to the center of Waxaw, Waxaw Indian Trail Road. And we are dedicating, you know, additional right of way for the improvements and for their ultimate section. I'll also point out, I've enlarged that section just a bit. We don't have any lots that are actually fronting right against the road. These lots will face the road, but this is about 125 or 150 feet of a pecan grove that's there now. So even if DOT had to do something even extremely long range, it's not like they're taking anybody's home. They're taking a part of the amenity of this development, but we thought...
It's likely those trees will die of natural causes before DOT comes to it.
Easy now.
Well, that's true. How old are these trees?
They're actually varying ages. The whole property is operated as a tree farm over the last several years.
Chris brings up a good point. As being part of the Master Plan and Planning Organization, the MPO, all of the member jurisdictions are responsible for taking the thoroughfare plan, the regional thoroughfare plan, and administering our regulations to protect right of way. We're actually required to do that. So that's one of the things that we have in our ordinance is that we protect that future right of way. We don't allow any construction in that right of way and we require the dedication of it. So DOT doesn't have to go in, remove buildings, remove structures, and purchase right of way later on. They can purchase it now and they don't have to negotiate what that price is years from now. They've already taken care of that. That's part of our ordinance as it is.
Any further questions? At this time, we think we reserve the right to ask you to come back up.
I will be right here should the opportunity arise. Thank you.
Is there a person here that would like to speak for or in opposition to this? If not, I'm just giving the opportunity to speak. All right. Any discussion before we go into a motion or the chair will entertain a motion? Either one?
I make a motion. We approve this as presented.
Do you want to include in that motion the prerequisites that we had earlier?
Previous conditions that we...
Previous conditions?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir. So I approve it with the previous conditions.
Of our previous.
MPO.
I'll make a second. And we have a second. Is there any comments or any further discussion? If not, chair calls for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, light sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Wish you luck and success with it.
I'll end that here. I've got the extra.
At this time, we'll entertain the planning staff's report.
Okay. There were actually 14 intersections identified. We had 15, but one dropped out because we found out that there had been a significant amount of work already done on that particular intersection and we didn't want to sort of reinvent the wheel on that one, so it dropped off. I don't remember which one that was, but we're moving forward with the conceptual designs for those critical intersections, hopefully to have that done, I think, in the next 60 days or so. And then have a finished product, I think, by June is what I believe the timeframe is. And then we're going to use that for, obviously, going to the MPO for funding for improvements for those intersections. So that's moving forward. We are working on new software that we have. We started implementation of that. It's permitting, plan review, and complaints that we will be implementing. We currently don't do digital plan review right now, but the software will allow us to be able to do digital plan review, where we actually have them in a digital format, can send them out digitally. We're looking forward to that. And we hope to have that in place by July. We're doing modules now, but we hope to have the whole... And we hope to have that in place by July. We're doing modules now, but we hope to have the whole thing in place by July. That's kinda all what's going on with, uh, planning right now, unless I've forgotten something.
We have, yeah, we have our, um, we, we brought on board a, uh, market analysis expert to help us with our Henry Bridge, uh, small area plan. We didn't have the expertise in-house to necessarily, um, determine the, uh, impact that, uh, bypass construction may have on future, uh, amounts of square footage, uh, for, you know, things like industrial and commercial development, multifamily. Um, we wanted to be able to have somebody come on board and really, that has some, some expert, expertise in that area to help us out. Uh, that contract is, is moving through the county's approval process. So, uh, we hoping to get that person on board, uh, pretty quickly. And we have almost enough people to form a, uh, a committee, uh, down near the bridge. And once we get, once we get enough people in place, we're gonna have our first, uh, community meeting. So, um, I'll let you guys know about that. You mail notice to everybody in Henry Bridge to come on out and tell us what they will say.
Also want to, uh, remind those of you, uh, that are up for reappointment.
I think it's just me left that needs to do the application.
This week is the last time you can submit your application. Don't turn them in, then you may not be reappointed. Keep that in mind. You need to get your applications in to Lynn West, the clerk, so that, 'cause she's trying to put them on the April eighteenth meeting.
Do you have names?
What?
Is my name on that list?
I, I don't think so. I'm not calling any names out. I'm just wanting to make sure, if you wish to be reappointed, please get your application in. Come on, guys, get your act together, would ya?
If Chris, if Chris doesn't turn his in, if Chris doesn't turn his in, can I turn one in for him?
If you can sign his name, you'll be good.
Who's, who's or who is going off? Do you know?
Um, I, I wanna say, I think, I think Don's name was on there. I think Everett and I think, uh, Chris. I'm not, those were the three that were up for re- was it Patrick?
It was me, Melton, and Chris.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There, there were three, I think, that were up for reappointment.
Did we get a letter?
If you didn't get a letter, you're not up for reappointment. I had, I had your name on the brain, so you must not be up for reappointment.
I didn't get a letter.
If you didn't get a letter, you're not invited, you're not invited back.
I knew I should've kept my-
Raise your hand if you didn't get a letter.
I think that oughta tell you something, Don. Uh, that, that, if you didn't get a letter, that means that you weren't on the list for-
You're safe.
For reappointment. You're still, you're still- Also wanna let the board know that the commissioners, uh, were very supportive of the text changes and actually adopted the text changes, which now do away with term limits. So there are no more term limits for Board of Adjustment, the Planning Board. You can request to be reappointed as, as long as you like. Obviously, the commissioners make a decision on whether to reappoint or not. But, uh, no more term limits. We thought that was a, a really good decision, uh, for that area. You've got a lot of good, kinda good, uh, working knowledge here on the board and, and hopefully that'll, that'll be a good thing. That's pretty much all we've got going on with planning department right now.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, does anyone have any comments?
Beautiful sedivation.
Chris, could you get your act together?
Is that a formal comment?
Mr. Chair, we see Chris for a few minutes after the meeting.
Yeah, right.
More, more than welcome. Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And we have a second.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me turn the, turn the recordings off.
Then we can start the real meeting.